So let's make a motion to come out of executive session, go back into regular session, adjourn the meeting or should we just continue on to?
Correct.
Yeah.
You can close these, especially meeting.
Okay.
You might think that you have a separate special meeting.
Yes, we did, yeah. Yeah, all right. So let's make a motion to leave executive session, go back into the special meeting and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Evelyn Race.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rancy.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Okay. Well, now we start the hearing, let's stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's get to the... Is there any public comment on the agenda before we start the public hearing?
We've reached here.
Yes.
Hi, Ruby. I have a correction to make from last month's thing I talked about, planning board, because Bill Gray was recently dead and I could remember when he and I talked about him getting a meeting and that was like dating before yesterday, it was 25 years ago. So when I spoke, I meant board of assessment review, not the planning board. There are three typos in the email that I sent to everybody today. I don't think they're gonna make, might be more understandable or less understandable. And we can use AI in case that's necessary for interpreting things. In terms of things on the agenda, I believe our chief's employment agreement is there. I think there are three typos. There's a 10.5% increase, which I think means 1.5% cumulative, because you can't add up the numbers of what his salary was in January this year with what, if you do that 10.5%, you add up, you get. He also has mentioned 20 weeks, which I think you mean 20 working days. In BBA regulations, it talks about working days and in the contract, it says 20 weeks, which would be technically, if you use calendar days, 28 days. And just as a reference point, at 15 years, it goes to 25 days for everybody in the police department. And then in the area where it talks about if he works for five years, he gets the same health benefits as if he worked for 20 years. The underlying agreement has changed and it's 18 years. So my apologies for being this way, but this apparently is the way I'm born. Item 19, nope, it's not 19 anymore. Item 24 on the Association of Towns, I think it would be really cool to do something about how we don't have a charter. Some municipalities in the state did for a window, the state did do charter municipalities, but now we don't. Our town clerk spent a good time hunt for that. Our former supervisor, who I talked to, had never heard of it. And of course, you can't hear about it because it doesn't exist. But if we are going to self-govern ourselves, we need a charter. And it would be good to tell a story about our community of how not having a charter has or hasn't helped us. And that gives a chance for other municipalities to consider their own conditions. Because it allows, if currently we're still running under royal patents from 1638, which creates strong governors and strong supervisors and minimizes the voice of the people. We won the war of independence, it's time to take it and put it into law. As things on the agenda, I think that wraps it up. Thank you.
Okay, so anybody else? No? Okay. All right, let's go on. We have a continuation of the NEMA unsafe building proceeding. So it looks like we have the property owners representatives that are here tonight. You want to go over the draft fire production, fire flow assessment with us tonight?
Sure.
Okay? Thank you.
Andrew Feathers to the Colliers Engineering and Design. Yeah, there's, we received the report and as a matter of fact, I printed out five copies for the board members. I gave Gary a copy as well, I can make others if necessary. And I apologize, we got this today, so I didn't go through it thoroughly. Don't be intimidated by the size of this. The rear of the document is all calculations. There is an executive summary.
Okay.
There is an executive summary up front. Basically, they looked at ISO, which is insurance ratings for fire flow and then also New York State Code. What we are thinking with what we've been able to do in the past couple of weeks is we did meet ISO ratings. What we did was, NEMA got a contract from Nanini and Callahan to construct those, that one dry hydrant that we did do at the Patillo pool. That would be about 120,000 gallons of water storage. We could duplicate that at another pool at the gym. It's about equal size, you want to measure it up, but we could duplicate that and get that 240,000 gallons that's mentioned in the report. I'll show you the page that, there's one page in that report. Can I look at that for a second?
Of course.
There's a one page in here that's most helpful. Like I said, the back is all calculations that drove to the table. This is on page 14 of 18. And what's there is, the buildings are all numbered and there's a map behind this that shows the identification of those numbers. The names of the buildings are also on the next column. The following column is needed fire flow based on ISO, that's the insurance rating. And the highest number on that is 2,000 gallons per minute. Highest duration that they need that type of flow is two hours. You do the math and the two hours times the 240 gives 2,400, I'm sorry, 240,000 gallons of water storage to take care of that code requirement. So we have 120 in one pool, I believe I can get 120 out of the other pool, have two dry hydrants that could be used by the fire department to provide additional fire flow to what comes out of the hydrants that are there, which we know is insufficient at between 400 and 600 gallons per minute. But we think on it, I think we think quickly, you know? We can get these built and get these implemented, get these in place. We also spoke, in addition to speaking to Nanini and Callahan about the construction of the one, which, what I have is, I have a contract that the client would like to sign and get Nanini and Callahan on board to build that one at Patillo. We've also suggested hiring Weston and Sampson engineers to look at the other pool that's over in the gym building, size that up and see if they, let them come up with a solution to utilize that pool as a second storage tank. Then, I think that's, the other conversations that I've had was with Mike Traynor.
Sure.
And I know you have that on your agenda.
Yes.
And I'm thankful for that, I think that's great. We were talking exactly along the lines that you're looking at, municipalities plus school district, looking for funding and then the remainder coming from private entities, which would be my client, of course.
Yes.
And we could get that main built, whether Mike decides that it's best down Mailer or down Main. I also talked to the county engineers, I know that they were placing the bridge on Main across from the middle school and that has accommodations for a 12-inch water main, so. Things are getting lined up, but you know, for our immediate need to have that water supply available, should it be, hopefully it never is needed, but should it be needed, that temporary water supply, we believe we could provide.
How quickly?
Well, we gotta, my client said, I wanna, I want to sign the contract to get Nanini and Callahan on board. I told him, don't do it until we speak to the board. I don't want him to spend money unnecessarily. If it's not going to be accepted, not going to be used, then there's no point. This is the same type of device that we just got approved over in Salisbury Mills, drawing off of a pond. This is going to be drawn off of a heated building pool with water circulating and cleaned, so it's a better situation. When we get, when we get a feeling that this is going to be acceptable and we'll work for the town on a temporary basis, we'll sign the contract, you know? And then Nanini and Callahan can get out there. And we can keep the supervisor well-aggressed of when they're going to start and their schedule and when it's completed, you know, have Gary and the fire chief and the engineers come out and take a look at it, see that it's acceptable. We're ready to go. We've done some work and we're ready to go.
Yeah, I mean, look, I think that, so we need two pools. The, you already have the, do you have like the designs for the, you know, for the dry hydrant and you have all that in place, so it's really just a matter of?
Yeah. Yeah, I provided that before.
Yeah.
To, yeah.
Yeah.
I did, Gary, have you looked at those?
Yes, I had a chance to quickly go over the narrative that was provided today. It's mostly calculations, it looks a lot more in-depth. I like the concept of what they're proposing. I do think it's a good idea to have our engineers give it a look over, but I support the plan they're proposing.
Sure.
It's not a cure-all, but it's a supplement to what's there now and it's a significant increase in water, should there be an incident.
And you can bring both pools on this year, I guess?
I think so. We, the engineers, we're going to look at that second pool. I don't have anything from them yet, they haven't been retained to do that yet. We wanted to see first if the one pool that we can get implemented right away with the contractor's assistance, if that would be, if that would be sufficient, then we'll do it.
One pool in hell, that's 120,000 gallons?
In Patillo, yes.
And one down below, that's in the gym.
I think it's similar, I haven't measured it, but I believe it's similar.
Isn't there a problem with that pool, that's a big question?
That's why the engineers have been brought on to make it work. Yeah?
I mean, I just, just getting this now, it's, I've got a lot to absorb and I know I usually talk to our real inspector and I would actually talk with our engineers and our, hopefully our fire chief, so we could, I'd have to dissect this.
Understood, yeah.
You know, it's a big, it's a large amount of information and we just got it to the, you know?
Completely understood. I did reach out for the fire chief a number of times. We spoke briefly, but not completely, on Friday. And it's, I don't have anything substantive from our conversation.
Can you email this to Mike Amaro, our engineer?
Of course, absolutely.
Because the, you know?
Because he obviously doesn't have it.
I think he was on the email, I think he was on the email.
Was he? Okay, well, I don't know that.
Yeah, they, they, we have to remember he has it.
I'll make sure.
I believe he was on the email.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know who's.
Oh, Paul, I'm pretty sure he has it, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, it sounds to me like we need the engineering firm to just review this as quickly as possible and, I mean, look, I think, yeah.
That's a feedback, I think.
Yeah, we are willing to hear their technical expertise on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, 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 fine.
And I think, I have noticed there have been some very noticeable improvements and I've seen some things on social media, so, just other things, so I am pleased to see that there is an effort to really refurbish the property, so thank you.
Towards, towards the refurbishment, my firm has been out with a laser scanner and some surveyors. They wear a backpack now and they walk through every building.
Okay.
You don't need a tape measure anymore.
That's awesome.
It scans the building, it finds outlets, type of ceiling, size of windows, you could use it for dimensional plans. That's what we're doing now, they did inside and outside of three buildings so far, so that's also in progress, so, yeah.
Thank you, I mean, I do see on the outside, I do see a lot of improvements.
Great. All right.
Do you have any other questions for Mr. Feathers? No?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll get it over to Mike Lamaro and ask him to communicate with the board.
Absolutely.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So this should be adjourned.
Yeah, we'll adjourn to the next September.
September 9?
Yeah, September 9.
So the hearing will be adjourned until September 9?
We'll get a motion to adjourn the hearing until Tuesday, September 9, so.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Evelyn Race.
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rancy.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Do you have anything else to add?
No, I just want to sit for your discussion on the wording.
Oh, sure. Okay. Okay, next we have approval of, oh, actually, well, first, is there any public comment on the NEMA unsafe building proceedings before I move on to minutes? No? Okay. Okay, if I get a motion to approve the July 8, 2025 work session, special meeting and the July 17, 2025 special meeting?
So move. Second. Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
I have to say, I wasn't present.
Ms. Evelyn Race.
Yes.
17th.
Ms. Michael Rancy.
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse.
Yes. Okay, so first off, we have a stop sign request on Mallor, basically where Mallor Avenue is through. We've gotten this in the past a few times before, about putting a stop sign there. You know, as you know, we have this continued, you know, residents, you know, being concerned about the speeding on Mallor Avenue and looking for ways to, to address it. You know, certainly if we are going to make a, you know, do anything with the stop sign, it does require an amendment to the vehicle and traffic law. Joe, do you have any data at all?
Yes, so conveniently, our speed sign is about 20 feet north of that intersection. I was able to get three months of data. The average daily speed ranges from a high of 27 miles an hour, at, really at the highest, and that's over three months. I mean, I can email it to you, but there's not really any evidence of speeding, that's a chronic problem.
And I think what we saw in the past when we had submitted for the, you know, speed reduction request to the state, is that they had said that the, that the data, that, we actually, at that point in time, that was before the DOT paid for the traffic studies, we actually paid for this one, and the data did not support the reduction in the speed limit, but, you know, because the residents were concerned, we tried to find other measures, you know, one of which was the speed sign. There may be a future opportunity where, you know, based on some future plans of the school district, where we may need to put a, you know, school speed zone on Mallor, which would then maybe qualify us to do some additional things. I had kind of brought up, and I'm not sure if this is allowed, Dominic or, you know, chief, but, you know, I know the city of Albany and other cities, maybe even some other large towns, they have those speed zone cameras in school zones. I don't know if they allow that in towns of our size. What does it take to do that? I mean, I have had some residents ask about that. So, do you have any idea, Dominic?
No, we could check into it.
Those those cameras that take a picture of the car, be speeding, takes a picture of the car, types up a news ticket, sends it to your house.
Like the one I got on 9W.
That's exactly what I want. If that man of Appling, we'll solve a lot of issues.
Yeah, I don't know what you're solving.
And then the data say, comes in miles per hour.
All right, a few tickets. The past five years, there's been three accidents, none were speed related, two fender vendors in '22, and May of this year, there was a rollover accident, it was a medical emergency.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was a medical emergency, yeah. Okay, well, I mean, I think certainly it makes sense to, if somebody could look into the, the speed zone camera issue, I don't know if that's like.
I believe that has to be put specifically into law, into the vehicle and traffic.
So maybe it would, what, take like a home rule request or we need our state legislators to, to, if that's what we want, I'm not saying we want to do it, I'm just saying that we've had, this is similar to like what you have going across the county now, where you have those like school bus stop zone cameras, correct?
I certainly think that those kinds of things are worth talking about in specific zones where individuals need to have an extra level of protection, like in school zones.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, like school speed zones.
I do, I am concerned sometimes when more cameras are going out.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking of like school speed zones, that's like specifically, not just like on every highway in town to.
Right, I mean, I think a good example is our neighbor, Windsor, has a lot of cameras at intersections.
Everyone.
Because of the dangerous nature of the independent intersection, they're not giving out tickets, they're just monitoring driving behavior.
That's right.
Right.
But having cameras installed anywhere usually mentally slows people down, because they're being watched for photos usually taken, so it's a good idea.
Okay.
And the, and they're not moving violations, so they don't give points, they're just like a parking ticket.
Yeah, no, it's like, you know, you do, you get like a $50 or whatever.
So be careful who you loan your car to.
That's true. No, no, that's true, maybe, I don't know.
They've seen it.
You can take it to the owner.
My goodness, I got two of those tickets.
Oh, no.
Yeah, and that, they've actually won a couple.
Next, we have the inter-ministerial grant opportunity. So this is something that, that the village water department approached the school district and the town of Cornwall with, as you know, we have undersized water mains in certain parts of the town and that sort of like creates a fire, a aqua water flow problem for certain, you know, areas and properties in the town. And really, the only way to address that is to upsize the water mains to a certain size. Now, of course, that can be very costly. And so the thinking goes here, and we've already had very, very preliminary discussions and this would most likely be a grant that we submit next year, because the village, if certain parties agree to this, they would start doing the design and engineering and we would submit this next year. But they want to start the engineering now, so the idea is to basically work with the school district, you know, the town has certain properties within it, and so the idea is that we apply, you can get up to, let's see if they have the amount here that you can get. So you can get up to 40% of the cost and then the remaining 60% of the cost, and this could be anywhere from, I'm just gonna put this, you know, anywhere from like two to, what am I putting on here, like two to $10 million. And so if you have the village contributing, you have the school district, you have, you have NEMA, you have possibly other properties that are in need of this, they all would split the remaining 60% of the cost. There may be other grants for this as well, but really, this, this is probably the best way to, you know, obtain funding, and we think we have a really good chance if we're applying jointly with the school district.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Is the village taking the lead on this in terms of?
Uh, yes. Yes, they, they simply just asked the each, you know, so.
So the village would be the one, like you say, if they, you know, was only offering kind of grants or would they be the ones doing the grant applications, would they be the ones, you know, have some grants you actually have to pay for and get reimbursed? Is the village going to do that?
I, well, I would imagine, I, I, I don't know yet, we would, we're at the stage where we're looking at it right now. I would imagine the village water system would be the lead and you would have then other sub-applicants, they would probably manage the funds as well.
Okay, all right, now, I just wanted to have.
Yeah, I think that our whole discussion in our two-year-long public hearing with NEMA has really brought to light the fire and water supply difficulties that we know also are suffered by the middle school and neighborhood schools, so we think this is a, this is a great way to try to remedy these things.
And the new regulations, the Department of Health has required water ministry to have minimum interest.
And they're providing the school this year?
When the school just, yeah, the school just, that's a, that's what.
They're in the interest of the schools.
Right, because I think if they're doing a mandate, when the school, right, okay.
Well, I mean, it's.
You're right, it's very early.
It's with, it's with the engineers right now, they really just want to know if, well, one, if the town is interested in being a part of the grant, and I mean, I think we would, I would hope. But, you know, that would just then allow them to go forward, knowing that they're going to be working with the school and the town to jointly apply for this, they would be the lead, they'd have to be, because they're the water system and they own the pipes. I don't know, have anything else would like shake out? I mean, hopefully, you know, NEMA or other properties that are going to benefit from this is, you know, well, we have to look into how that would work in terms of, you know, having private entities join this, we would have to look into, but this is just a very preliminary.
We have an originating duty to public safety.
Yeah, so I think, I think we need to, and I was, I was glad that the village had come to us with this, because they're being proactive about this, and they want to make sure that it doesn't all fall to the taxpayers on this, so that we're hopefully going to get a good portion to pay for this, so. Any other questions on this? No? Okay. Okay, so, next we have, yes, good night.
Thank you.
So we're going to be adopting this later in the special meeting, but we're submitting the BRICS New York grant for Munder Cottage, which is due on Friday. And so this would basically be a resolution, a secret resolution for Munder Cottage. This is just something that you need to have as part of the grant application, it helps show project readiness, and so, and as, so for the BRICS grant, we're basically applying for, for, you know, close to the full amount of grant funding to add additional 7,500 square feet of space on the Munder Cottage. So that's what that is. Get to Stone Hollow, which I think is why some people are here tonight. Okay, so, originally, we had had on tonight that we were going to be passing a resolution to call the Stone Hollow performance bond. And earlier today, we had, like I said, we called it an 11th hour call with the developer with legal counsel, engineering, et cetera. Basically, where we're at is, we have said that you have two weeks, you have until August, August 26th, that they basically have to, they have to get out there, they have to start making progress, they have to come up with very firm timelines, and they have to show that they're actually, you know, serious about, about working on this. I would recommend that if they do not start to do that over the next two weeks, that the board comes back in here, calls a special meeting and calls the bond on August 26th.
Why wouldn't we schedule a special meeting now?
Well, that, that's what I was going to make it a motion.
Yeah, so what do they need to do? Are they going to just come back and say they're going to do X, Y, and Z?
No, no, part of this, part of this, we have to have a meeting onsite next week and they have to start scheduling things to be done. If that does not happen, then we will be back in here on the 26th, but they asked us for, they asked us for two weeks. And what I would just say is that, I know, I believe that it's gotten to the, in the past, we did not have principals of the firm on the call, we did today, and they were very serious about not wanting, you know, so, you know, Steve was on the call with us and.
Well, in deference to the people who live on Stone Hollow. Well, in deference to the people who live on Stone Hollow, this is really going on a long time.
I agree, and so, but what I've also gotten from the people on Stone Hollow as well is that there is a fear that if we call the bond, that one, the bond is not gonna cover all the costs, two, we don't know if we have a litigation with the bond company, so there's actually probably an equal number of issues. So, really, what we've been trying to do the past three years here is get the developer to do as much as possible, so we don't end up in what I would call a situation that's like this, and I think we've gone, and I mean, if you looked at the original list from three years ago, I mean, the bond wouldn't cover it. We've now gotten to the point where, where, you know, near the end of this, and really, there's, there's some technical and some process-related things, and, you know, as-built plans, but a lot of it is, you know, so I think that this is, you know, and the attorney, you know, agreed that we should basically let, you know, just give this very, you know, narrow window, and it's on that, I mean, we were very clear, like, we're gonna be back in here on the twenty-sixth if you do not perform over this time period, you know, and I just.
It would be better for Ginsburg to finish the work that they need to do out there, so the town can accept the improvements that have been made and take over at that point. You know, there's been an open question that I saw in some of the emails and concerns that are going on, you know, regarding what's gonna happen with snow plowing this coming season, you know, the town is not in the business of plowing roads that haven't been accepted as town roads. And so, if this work can be completed by Ginsburg, it would certainly be preferable, I think, for all involved.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I would say is that when you go the route of the, you know, calling in the bond, well, the bond company has the ability, they can decide they're gonna do the work. If they don't, then the town takes over, but then we've gotta go out to bid.
That's, right, that exactly, to your point, that is not going to happen between now and December, you know, it's gonna take longer than that for, for that work to occur.
So what, what do you think the timeline will be done? If everything, if everything goes well, what do you think the timeline would be for them to resolve this?
Well, I don't know what the, how much time they need to complete the work, I think that's for the meeting that's gonna be scheduled for next week, right? And that's gonna happen.
Maybe you can.
Yeah, next week, and then, and then also, I know that the HOA would like, you would, Kristen, you would ask to have like a meeting like, I guess after, before.
Yeah, in two weeks, ideally, so that when they haven't made progress.
Yeah.
We can discuss moving on. I think to Karen's point, like, this has gone on long enough, we don't have time anymore to sit and continue giving them chance after chance. Unfortunately, winter is coming, and not to beat a dead horse, but you're gonna leave an entire street of residents to basically fend for ourselves when it comes to snow removal, because it's not gonna be a town road, we're not technically really like a private road, we kind of are, we have the HOA, you know, like, so we have to figure out now if I need to go and speak with our homeowners and start billing them for snow removal, that's gonna come up in a couple of months, because that's not cheap, I've bid it out, you guys know how much that costs as well to bid out, like, and I can't hit, you know, all of the homeowners with a surprise bill for that, because we keep giving Ginsburg a chance after a chance. We didn't hear from them, we sent certified letters, the HOA sent certified letters, they never responded, and that was back in May. So to say that they called this morning, knowing that this meeting was happening, you know, it just is prolonging this inevitable.
We, you know, we understand that, but what I'm saying is that there is a, there's a process that you have, that you have to follow, and they asked for one more chance, and they've got the chance, because if they ask for, I'm just saying, like, we have to think a couple of steps down the road here, and so, that, just, yeah.
What time do you wanna do a special meeting on the twenty-sixth?
I mean, if it's just this one item.
Or maybe a bit more towards the evening only, because how many of you work?
Probably everybody. If you wanna do a seven P M. meeting.
I, I think in fairness to the residents, that would be.
I was gonna suggest that we do it at like seven o'clock.
Mr. Cordisco, can I ask a question? Is there any recourse that the town has as a public safety concern to compel them to actually use the HOA money to be plowing, like, how do they just get away with not doing?
Well, until, until the town accepts it as a town road, it is a private road.
So even though that they're paying an HOA, they really have no recourse in terms of how the money is spent? Like, like the money that they're putting in, like, I would think the HOA, you know, for condos, it's, it's for the maintenance of properties, and you have.
Right, but to Kristen's point, like, she has.
We don't have a budget line item for snow removal, because the developer was covering that, it's their road, it's not our road, it's not your road, it's their road, so they've been covering snow removal up until basically no one's heard from them anymore. If the town's not gonna do it, but you have to understand, when we called in the bond, I think we all are agreeing that Ginsburg's not coming back.
Sure.
The bond company is not, like, so at that point, then I have to understand either that the HOA then owns the road, or you guys own the road, or no one owns it, like, that's what I guess we have to figure out.
Here's, here's.
That's, that's what I think, right, it's a private road at that point.
I think what the, what the attorney is saying is, if we call in the bond, it is very unlikely that the work's gonna be done this year, and it's essentially gonna be on the HOA.
Right.
And I know, and I, and I understand, because over the past couple of years, the concern has been that the homeowners are gonna have needs put on the property for unfinished work, so we've been trying to avoid, that's how that happens, right, Dominic? So we've been trying to avoid this, because we don't wanna do that, we already know you've, you know, suffered enough with the development, so, I mean, we're kind of in this like, kind of shitty place, you know, to excuse my cursing here, but, you know.
That's fair, I think the problem too is, part of our tax dollars, let's all also just be very clear, we are all Cornwall taxpayers, part of our tax dollars pay for snow removal that we're not getting, so if I also have to go to my, you know, homeowners and put a line item in our HOA budget to cover snow removal, we're paying Town of Cornwall, like, so, does, does our tax dollars not pay for snow removal in this town? It does. So partly, we are paying for a service we're not getting, and we haven't gotten.
But we don't own the.
Right, but neither do we technically, it's so hard.
I mean, if family Cornwall can't use funds to maintain a property that technically is not.
We do get trash service, though.
Well, yes, we pick up trash out of private roads.
But, yeah, so we are getting trash service.
So I think when we're.
We're picking, choosing what the town is designing.
There's no code fire mission that we can actually, since they, they own the property, Ginsburg, in terms of unsafe.
It's, it's not uncommon that developers walk away and don't finish roads.
All right, thank you.
We had a huge problem with Quaker Mill.
Yeah, but you guys need to say.
That's when the bank went under.
Road, but Dominic, don't the property owners that have bought the road own the road? Ginsburg doesn't own the road.
Well, they, they don't own, own to the center line, I believe it's a separate lot. I could be wrong about that, but I believe that it's a separate lot that's been offered, so if I need.
Every other private road in town is owned by.
This is, this subdivision was done with the anticipation of it being a public road and dedicated.
Correct.
In the other subdivisions you're referring to, they are designed to be a private road and never maintained by the town.
Correct.
And this subdivision is intended for the town to take ownership of the road.
I don't believe, this was done around two thousand and five, thereabouts, and I believe that because it was going to be offered for dedication, and it was offered for dedication, the problem is the town won't accept it until it meets newer specifications, the town's specifications for public road improvement, and, and as a result, like, it's no longer the practice to have property owners own basically out to the center line of the road, where their, their property goes out to the center, and then somebody else's property starts on the other side. I think their properties end at the road right of way, and so as a result, like, they technically don't own it, but they use it, you know, but the town doesn't own it yet either, because it's been offered for dedication, but it hasn't been taken yet.
And it's not in our HOA bylaws, just to be very clear too, that would, in order for us to take it, in order for me to get the homeowners, I would have to make a bylaws change, which would have to be approved as a, you know, against anybody that's a part, I would have to do some work to do that as well, which takes time and special meetings and things, so.
I think as far as the plowing is concerned, I think we need to, let's like, work this next two weeks.
Right.
If we have to call in the bond, and we have to consider what's gonna happen, you know, during the winter and, and snow removal, that, that is a, a discussion that the town has with the HOA, but I think, like, let's, let's, you know what, the developer said they want two weeks, and we were very clear, I mean, everyone, I mean, they heard it on the call today, you've got two weeks, you most certainly can progress, we're calling it in.
There are portions of the road that have been identified that have to be built and relaid, and that's where I think the significant cost in taking over the road, and we don't wanna bear that on the taxpayers, that's the big, big concern.
So, let's, let's, Kristen, let's loop back and we'll get a date, you know, I guess a Zoom call with all the members of the HOA, the week of the, the week of the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I just don't wanna get into September and.
No, 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 we're, we're, we will schedule it for that week.
I do have two other things, by the way, that just I want everybody thinking about too. Speaking of safety hazards, the two holes, we're gonna call them, because I don't really know what else we call them, at the top of the road have been open since November, they are just giant holes, one on the side of the sidewalk, GDC left those, they were supposedly working on the pillar lights, no one has been back, they said the ground was too cold, all of these excuses. If I don't see, I can see them essentially pretty much daily when I walk out to get my mail, if I don't see anybody working on those, those are my biggest concerns, is that property is owned by the HOA, so they're causing liability to us. I can't touch it because I didn't open the holes, so I, I don't know, it seems like the town can't do anything to fill these holes in, but.
We talked about today, you said it's one of the first things they're gonna fix.
Perfection, okay, we definitely wanted that on.
I mean, I mean, look, in fact, when we're out there, that'd be like, fill it this week, I mean, right?
It should be super easy to fill in a hole, I don't, or do something with it. And then on the pump house parcel twenty-seven, and the areas between twenty-seven and twenty-nine at the end of the cul-de-sac, I believe when the pump house is handed over and part of the dedication, the town, that'll go on the town maintenance schedule. The weeds are eating the sidewalk, so I just wanna like, figure out if, if GDC's still in control of that pump house, it seems like the Town of Cornwall Sewer Department is maintaining the pumps, but not the pump house, or whatever's going on there, but there, there's no maintenance schedule, and we're not quite sure it's not HOA property, it's not anybody's property to maintain.
That has gotta be due to us either.
No.
No, okay. And I'm in.
Look at the sidewalk, if you gotta replace it, you gotta replace it.
Perfect, just want that sort of looked at as well, if anybody does, just want it on somebody's radar. Doesn't mean too bad, thank you.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a question, I'm sorry, just for clarification. So this deadline of the twenty-sixth.
Yes.
And we've given them the extended two weeks, at this point, are they giving you a list of what they're going to do, or are we providing them with another deadline to make sure that certain things are addressed and completed?
We, so we have a list, their team and our team are meeting out there next week. Work is supposed to start, and you're supposed to give us timeframes for, you know, total completion of the project this year. If, if none of that happens, and they don't make any progress on any of these items in the next two weeks, we're calling in the bond, that, that's what's, you know, we just can't let it.
Right, that starts a whole other process, to your point earlier on, you know, it's like the bonding company may decide that they wanna take over the work, maybe dispute it, portions of it, but once you're in that pathway, as Krista mentioned, like, you know, Ginsburg is certainly out of it, because it'll be like, you know, like, you call the bond, so I'm not gonna do it.
Yeah, you have my money, why would I come back totally after all that? But I think at that moment, we need to have a very different conversation, because, again, it's not our road, it's not your road, it's certainly not their road, whose road is it? And who, I, I just wanna make sure that our residents, you know, we do have some first responders on the street, not really name drop, but.
Just to be clear, it's Ginsburg's road until the town accepts.
Exactly, so it's supposed to be their responsibility, but they're gonna be gone, so is, is something we can use the bond funds to cover the plowing? Just like, I mean, we can obviously have that discussion when we go that route, but I just, again, wanna be prepared, I don't want the residents to be prepared, because I can't find snow plowing for under twenty K for the season, so that's gonna be a huge hit, we do not have in our budget.
So we're looking to twenty-six, the seven, twenty-six, right?
Correct.
You said.
Yes.
Perfect.
Especially with twenty-six to seven P M.
Seven P M. will be there.
Yes, no, we, we're gonna schedule in fact, we'll, we'll notice that tomorrow. Okay, you're right, sure, all right. I wanna give you something else, whoever's, hopefully, for that.
Yeah, I think he's, he's around there.
All right, so, August twenty-sixth at seven. Okay. Any other questions from Stone Hollow residents that are, no? Okay. All right, next, we have the Resolution Police Chief Employment Agreement Amendment. This is just some minor changes that we had to make to the police chief's contract based on the new PBA contract, you can see them delivering it here, has to do with vacation, personal leave, and the additional, adding additional holiday to the list, and just generally just updating the amount of vacation time, et cetera, he is entitled to get the, you know, the, the raise that the PBA members received, so, we just have to make sure that the contract meshes with his contract. Six, we have, this one is basically, this is like, I would just call this like a housekeeping item, where what we want to do is authorize members of the town board to be able to receive copies of, to be noticed of, of, of copies of local laws via a number of different methods, you wanna explain that, Dominic?
It's, it's just to clarify that for statutory purposes, for proposed local laws, that email service would suffice, you can obviously still get it in the paper copy, and still distribute it the way you normally get your paper copies, but this, to address an issue under the municipal home rule law, to make it clear that email is also an acceptable form of service to the town board members. This is only for local laws, under your doctrine.
Well, can you tell me what, I know I didn't receive correspondence from Mr. Gallow regarding this, and he basically was saying that we could also adopt a joint reorganization meeting in twenty-twenty-six.
You could?
Okay, so that, that's, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I mean, we just wanna have it for the rest of the year, right?
Correct, this is something that, you know, came across his, his concern, and thought that it would be.
Right, he, he actually said that, you know, it would be, you know, fine to do it, or if we wanted to adopt it.
Correct.
So, okay, yeah. He said I recommend the town board adopt the town resolution as reorganization meeting, or yes, or no? Okay.
Okay, next we have the MS for Stormwater Management Plan Annual Report, so, we need to schedule a public hearing for the MS for Stormwater Management Plan Annual Report for later this year.
Do you look the same date as the special?
We're looking at September sixteenth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that, I was.
Okay. No, I was just on my proposed.
It's gotta be when David Fricks is available from.
That's right, okay, that's right.
From my, so that's the one.
My apologies, I should have flipped the page.
Yeah, and actually, just, you know, going forward, there is, so because we now have, there's like new updated like MS four regulations, there is gonna be more active management on the town's behalf, and making sure that there's actually gonna be some, you know, there's gonna be private stormwater manage agreements that are gonna be in place in some of the larger projects, that, that we're gonna have to make sure are maintained, I mean, not by us, by the private entity, so, there's a few in town, in fact, we'll go over that list when we get to, to September, but that's.
Okay.
Okay, we have the usual storm ice control interministerial agreements, look, some years it's good and some years it's bad, right, Dominic? I mean.
Yeah, I was hoping, do we have any way, are we able to, we're just discussing this with Tom, any way about to try and negotiate a war, I mean, I just think the wear and tear on vehicles.
They give that same rate to every town.
I know, and what's the, to negotiate what? A higher rate, you know, I've been saying for the investor. I know, you know, a cost benefit for the town.
How many miles they do for us and then every other town, I mean, they put out a big chunk.
Okay, well, thank you for telling me that.
Some years it benefits us, some years it hurts us.
That's what I was looking for.
Next we have number nine, which is the County Transportation Agreement. This is for our senior transportation services. Contract for the bus, we do this every year. So this is, this is just the same standard agreement. 10 is release RFPs for the New York Ford project. So this is going to be to release, we have to put out the bid, project manager administrator and a project administrator for, we have the Riverlight Park Improvement Project and the Cornwall Connector Trail. It's all on one, you know. Then we have the, the Branding and Wayfinding Project. We have to put these out because in order to proceed, we need to have, to retain these project administrators. They will be paid for using the funds that we get from the, from the contract. So it'll go to, you know, for the wayfinding one, you know, when we retain, basically we have to retain a marketing and branding firm that's going to work on the signage and then we'll then work with a subcontractor to procure and install the signage. So we have to put that out to bid and then the other one is basically going to end up probably being an engineering firm that will manage the grant and construction management services. That'll be for the Riverlight Park and the Cornwall Connector Trail.
Would that be separate from our engineering firm?
They have to bid. Yeah, there's no, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's no, the state won't let us sole source it and we have to have two bids. So it is possible that it does end up not being our engineering firm. Next we have, okay, so these, these next two relate to due diligence for the 11 holder drive purchase. We recently, the seller has agreed to extend the due diligence period so we can get in place a survey and some environmental assessments.
Correct.
Yeah. So we have roughly until sometime October. And then, you know, we can't go to closing until this is done and we have a chance to review. So. So that. Now we have the street sweeper. So we, so this actually ended up working out. We ended up actually selling this to the Village of Florida. Tommy, we're getting more than we would have gotten from the auction.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. So this is a really, really old street sweeper that is like, what, 30 years old?
23 years old.
Yeah, so it's old. And so we ended up getting $8,000 for it. An auction, it was like, at least a few thousand less than that, so, I mean.
Must have been a weakness.
Yeah?
Yeah.
They wanted it.
Just to refresh my memory, we do have a brand new one though.
Yes, we do. And actually, the brand new one's helpful because I believe it does have some stuff that we might need for the enhanced MS4 responsibilities that we have. That's one of the things, in fact, I don't know if that's why they're getting this truck, but municipalities now, a lot of them, in fact, at some point, we're going to probably have to get a VAC truck in the near future in order to be able to live up to the state's standards. Yeah, I mean, that, that's a whole, so basically, there are, I, I know, I know. They do have a grant fund for the VAC trucks, but in order to apply and be successful, you have to be all the way through putting in place your new MS4 policies, which is probably next year for us. Okay, next we have Shore Road Water Main Replacement. This is just a, this is a amendment to the engineering agreement. You know, we have to replace that water main that goes to the Shore Road Plant. This is just adding additional $7,500 in hourly services and reimbursable expenses to the existing engineering agreement. We've got Shore Road Phase Two Project. You know, again, Shore Road Phase Two, many, many millions of dollars project. But again, it's a DC mandate, so it is something we have to do. You can see here that this is a payment application here. So you can see the amount that the Blue Heron Construction is asking for there. So this will be to approve the payment application. We have the Currie Road Retaining Wall Project, everyone said the project. You can see the amount due to this application, 318,250. Then we get into the Hazbrook Drainage Project. This is a payment application. So this is the next one that we're going to pay out dating for August 8th, $435,000. Then we get into a few change orders here. So we have one that's roughly, and you can see what it is for up here. This one is for an increase of $2,500 and some change. This is basically catch pieces and slots that had to be put in during the field, but they're not part of the contract. So that's roughly $2,500. Now this other one here, okay, so now this is where we have a bunch of test pits, additional test pitting that had to be done due to, and I know I'd said this over the past couple of meetings, that when we started, you know, digging and excavating on Hazbrook and other areas, that there were, you know, as you know, as soon as you dig, stuff isn't where, you know, where you think it's going to be. And so in order to.
They have three feet.
Yeah.
They can be within three feet of their mark out.
Yeah, so, and there was also a little bit of like Hazbrook, so like the leg of Hazbrook right now, where we just finished like the backyards and through the woods. And we just, last Friday, finished basically decommissioning a water main and a bunch of other services on Hazbrook because we're now going to come down Hazbrook and do that leg of this, which is probably going to be done sometime in October. Then we're going to be doing the last part of this, which is going to be union. And some other, other minor areas. But we had to do test pits. So these are test pits to help us locate the underground infrastructure that were not part of the original contract that we really had no choice to do if we were going to, you know, not proceed with the, with the project. So you can see the amount of the increase there in the contract for the test pits. And I also want to point out too, all of these were reviewed by both the project engineer and the town's, you know, engineer as well. My member was signed off on them, so they were reviewed. Also, a couple of, yeah, so, so some of this is going to come out of contingency that we have.
Yes, correct.
All right, this last, this next one here, I'm going to try to be quick. So this is Parks and Rec Capital Project Update. Just kind of want to give this to you all. Go through this real quick, okay? And I'll be quick. So you can also see here under this, just today, Governor announced that Swim New York is out and it's due October 30th, round two of that. Last time, they didn't even have any money set aside for municipalities like Cornwall. This time, they're holding back about half for, you know, communities of lesser means, but there is a part of, but the remainder of that, we can apply for and, you know, I think this is really the only swimming pool, direct swimming pool grant program that exists in the state that only runs swimming pools. So even if we get a million bucks out of this, I mean, I would, I would be happy with it. But we're certainly going to, the goal is going to be to buy October 30th when this is, you know, is due. We have a couple of months is going to be to really work on, you know, getting those three to four options that we're looking for. Getting costs, because basically all the work that we need to do for Swim New York, we need to have to present to the public. So it's kind of like the timing fits. But, so yeah, so obviously the pool survey is done, it's completed. We have a meeting later this week with the, the pool engineer, the town engineer coming up. And so, you know, that, that'll be happening and, you know, obviously when we talk about Swim New York, you know, we get ready for that. We're on to Muggler Cottage next. Muggler Cottage, so as you know, this Friday, we're submitting the Bridge to New York proposal. That's going to be for Phase Two, for the 7,500 square foot update. You know, we, so we've been working on that the past couple of weeks to get ready for that. Phase One is already, you know, we submitted CDBG for the, for the new section, for bathrooms, floors, windows, vestibules, storage, et cetera. So we are moving forward on these. Sand drain homestead. So, you know, Jobbeers finished his work earlier this year. Really what we have left at this point is to paint the front porch, which I know we're going to be getting to before summer's out. We've just, it's just been busy with a lot of other things. So, you know, again, really the hope here is to be able to open this back up to residents and for events and to school kids. I mean, really we'd like to start, you know, being able to get in that building soon. Let's see, the American Legion Building, you know, and we've spoken about this, that because the bids came in over 500,000, they triggered Wicks Law, so we had to, you know, put this, this is actually going to be available on always 20th with bids due back on 9/17. You know, it's got to be for all the different, you know, plumbing, electric, you know, carpentry, whatever, asbestos, yeah. So this will come back and see where it comes in and then the board's going to have to make a decision on this. The Riverlight Park Playground. We met out here last week to basically go over the demolition that the, you know, the highway department's going to do and some of the limited grading that we have to do. That's going to happen sometime after Labor Day. The equipment gets here, was it the second week of September?
Yep.
Somewhere around there. And then it's going to start and it should be done sometime in October.
Very exciting.
Yeah, so what I would just say is that, so it's, it's, let's just say roughly a 440, 450,000 dollar project, 400K is coming from Scoofus. The remainder, and we had actually spoken about this, I think, you know, look, we've got some other pots of money. We could use the, I thought about the idea of, you know, that we use some of the Steven Delvedova money, dedicate the playground to them. So we have some options there because that could be used for repair, replacement of, you know, of existing.
The rec fund? Like the money that we get from developing and subdivisions?
No, the Steven, the Steven.
No, I was just saying, the rec fund we could be using too.
Delvedova's for Riverlight Park.
Right, but I thought that was for like the gazebo. Am I correct?
The gazebo bridge is probably like two years away. So I think there's a.
That's a community's to like, please.
We could use rec fees.
We could, look, you know what? I mean, money is, we'll, we'll figure it out when we go in.
I just think instead of going for that because it's already been publicized that it was going for the gazebo. Am I correct?
I think that we can go back and we can talk.
Change. Don't be, people are telling me that rather than.
So, so what I would say.
I'm sorry, it's on, on some video people's.
No, I, I understand.
And especially the people who are watching what's going to happen with that, with that particular.
Josh, at what point do we need to discuss and decide on where the additional money is going to come from?
Yes.
Well, it was already either going to come from rec fees, Steven Delvedova, or, you know, taxpayer dollars. So, I mean, I would just assume that it comes through the rec fees or Steven Delvedova. I don't, I don't really think that.
And at what point would you decide that?
Yeah. That could be in September.
Okay, let's do that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Then we can all discuss and do a little homework.
Let's see, the Ice House. So I think you all have seen the Ice House.
Yes, I have seen it every day.
Elizabeth Bruski is here tonight. I think, I mean, just sort of, I guess to, for those of you who don't know, I mean, basically this was a, you know, collaboration between the rec department, myself, Elizabeth here, and then obviously many other residents that have contributed towards it. And I mean, basically it's, you know, taking this, what was kind of a unused.
Space.
Nasty looking space that, you know, basically got transformed into a place. And I'll tell you, every time I walk by, there's kids in there, there's parents, there's grandparents with their grandkids. I mean, it's really being used. And quite frankly, it was really just a matter of, you know, programming a space, nothing structural was done. So this is really just sort of a, what I would call, you know, working within, you know, the rec department to program space. You know that we do have, we do have money from State Center or Scoofus, which is currently being, we're working on a plan to rehab the roof, fix some of the masonry, the back wall, pour a concrete floor, or put another type of floor there, some other stuff that would happen, you know, to make sure that it lasts. But, I mean, I'll tell you, people are really, I haven't had one, you know, negative, you know, comment about this at all. I mean, it's all been, people are very excited to be there and I think it looks great.
I actually was coming here, I was stopped by my nice neighbors, Mr. and Mrs. Bannino.
Yeah.
And they said, that beautiful space, the Ice House, who, who did it? And they wanted Elizabeth's contact. I said, I'll text it too. So they were like, we went there to play ping pong the whole evening with the whole family. They have three boys, both working parents. It was a place to refuge to nicely, walking the streets. Sit there while the kids play and enjoy the view of the pond. So it was nice to witness. You know, my kids enjoyed it too.
And then last part, the Triangle Park, you know, that, that park over by Main Street, that the goal is to do that sometime next year.
Yeah.
We're currently, Steve Dreback is currently updating the survey for us with COPO lines. We are going to have to work with, there is a property owner on the other side of the bridge that we're going to have to work with because we're going to either need to get a license agreement from that, you know, from them or to purchase it because, you know, we really can't have, it just doesn't make sense to have, you know, we need really to own the whole little piece of land that's right there in that Triangle Park. You know, it's kind of like a little, how should we say there is, Tim? Like just like a, like 20 feet in?
I think it's more, I think it's about 30, 40, 40 feet.
So, you know, we're, we're going to go and talk to them, but we need to have the survey first before we can go and have that discussion.
Do we don't have one from the purchase of the property when we bought it from the bank?
It needed to be updated. I asked Steve about it. He looked at it in the engineers and it wasn't sufficient. It'll send up to COPO lines, I'll give that. So we need that before we can really go any further on that. So that's Parks and Rec. Agenda Item 21. Okay, so this is a, I think most of you know about this.
Oh.
Yeah, so this, this is the UniCollab system that we now have in place that, we've basically launched the planning board part of it. If you're going to make an application to the planning board at this point, there, there's no longer any paper applications.
Well, the members have asked for paper, but the submission is going to a website.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, sure, if they want a paper application, sure, but they've got a, they're going to have to log in and do it, you know, electronically. So we're moving to the, to the digital age here. But basically, yeah, so this, this is great. We're, we're going to, I would say that some, have you had a lot of applications, Gary, for this?
No, because of moratorium.
No.
Yeah, so unless there's any active that are in there, I would, I guess I would expect we'll start seeing that like more in the future. But, you know, it's kind of, you know, Bill, allow us to kind of get used to using this right now. But basically, I would recommend all the board members, if they're interested, sign in, give it, use your name and passwords. You can kind of go in and like try to navigate, navigate the system. We're doing the zoning board of appeals next. That's going to be on this platform as well. You're also going to be, we do have a way, eventually all the escrow payments for the planning board, zoning board and building department fees will be taken via this system too. We're working our way through that. And then the last part of this is going to be sometime later this fall. Every application from the building department for permits, et cetera, are going to be done via this too. So we're kind of phasing out paper applications and moving over to digital. And I mean, what I think's great about it is when you log in, you upload everything, you can see when it was submitted, you can sort of see how it's tracking through the process. There's ways for us to interact with, you know, people that submit the applications, but, you know, we'll have to figure out if there's a way to have, you know, sometime. I know the planning board members were given like a, like a brief overview.
We had a brief training session at the, what was it, August?
Yeah.
At the August meeting. Was it August or July?
It was July.
It was July, right, yeah. Yeah, so I think, I think it's, you know, it's good.
We're getting there.
Yeah, and actually, I, I believe Warwick did this too. In fact, yeah, they were, they were. Yeah, they were, they were, yeah, Warwick did it too. They announced it, I believe, like a month ago, so Warwick's now on this, and there's, all up and down the Hudson Valley, we're starting to move to these types of systems. Next, we have the film permit application fee schedule. So, last time, we did put into place a amended, you know, commercial audio visual production, you know, law. This would, and I'm going to ask the board to do this tonight, we're currently operating over the old permit system, the permit application system that we have. The new laws come into place. So, you know, that was filed, and, you know, that's all good to go, but we got to put in place the new film permit application fees. I did this by working with, you know, the, the Orange County Film Office, Summer and Tony, you know them, from Choice Films, and then also looking at, you know, what the City of Newburgh and some other places did. And so, this is basically, the goal is to basically, you can kind of see what you're getting here, this kind of like makes it easier, because there's different things that sort of happen when you're filming, so this, you know, sort of takes into account different ways that you're getting, that you can get paid for, you know, for filming, and so, and, and also the two different, the two different buckets, right? So, you have a non-refundable application fee. That's going to be for things that are like, you know, not, like a not, like complicated type of permit. When you get into like rush application fees, if it requires town clerk review, and it's a rush, and it's like less than, what was it, five, five days in? Right? So, if somebody comes in and they want a rush, and this is under something that's just reviewed by the clerk, doesn't come to the town board, they got to pay the clerk a five hundred dollar rush fee. If it requires a town board, highway, police department review, because it's going to be something a lot bigger and extensive, and it's a rush, they got to pay the thousand dollar rush fee.
Do we want, do we want the language of this attachment to include OEM? Because that's the, to mirror the other policy?
I think it's in the, I think it's in the law, but, I mean, we could...
Oh, okay, well, then I would mirror the statute before I mirror our policy.
Yeah, I mean, we, uh, but we, we can certainly, I can certainly just write that in, we can add it, if we, yeah.
I'm just thinking to be consistent.
Sure, that makes sense, because we do...
In case, in case the permit includes the number of people that trigger the other policy, they should be on notice that this can happen.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah, it's like we have the Public Safety Committee.
And because it's involved and it's the attachment, and they're looking at money, then it's another way to communicate where our policies are with those incidences.
Makes sense. Uh, we have the location fee, five hundred dollars a day if you use the public property, parking fee, two hundred dollars a day for a side street, parking lot fees, you can see what this is. It's a twenty-five hundred for use of public parking if it's fifty percent or more of spaces. And then obviously, if you're going to be having to have, like this last one, the best medicine, you know, we, very directly after we incurred the cost, sent them an invoice, right, for those fees. And so, the same thing, so you're basically paying for what that costs. So, if you need, you know, two police officers and a, you know, highway department or whatever, you've got to pay for those, for those costs directly. And so, that, this is how it always was in the past too. So, we're really just, we're, uh, this is a carryover from the old permit fee schedule, you know, we, we acquired. And then there's a, uh, there's a security deposit of a thousand dollars, but if it's going to be for a larger, if there's larger productions, we can certainly up that amount. So, this is just like, anytime you get a film or town property, you got to get, put down a thousand dollars. But, where you would actually go and ask for a larger deposit is if you're doing the municipal, if you have a request for municipal personnel services. So, that's, that's what I'm, what we're looking at here. Then we get to the FY twenty-six budget schedule. So, okay, so basically, at the September ninth meeting, as is customary, we will be, you know, introducing the local law for the tax cap and scheduling a public hearing for Tuesday, October fourteenth. So, that, that'll be, that'll be circulated, you know, then, and scheduling a public hearing for October fourteenth on that. Tuesday, September thirtieth is the date that we have to file a tentative budget with the town clerk. Copies will be available to you. The, on Wednesday, October first, or at some point during the week, we do need to have our first, technically, you're supposed to have a budget presentation at a special town board meeting. And I figured we could, we could just start working the first week of October, you know, to start working on that. The reason why the slight gap in here is that there is a, you know, our, our, we have some of the, you know, personnel in my office that are going to be out that second week in October, so it really doesn't make sense to have, but there's really no reason for us to, you know, not start. I figure what always happens is, we can start the review, Pam will be there on the first to go over the budget. The board can have it for a week to basically, you know, review, come up with questions that they have. And then we'll be back at the budget workshop on Tuesday, the fourteenth. We could start like an hour and a half early before the regular town board meeting, if the board is so inclined to do that. We could then, on Wednesday, October fifteenth, we could have another town board budget workshop at, at five thirty P M. Maybe, I'm, I'm just trying to like, you know, yeah.
Total of seven.
I'm just putting these on the calendar, I think, I mean, Pam thinks that it's going to take, what Pam would say this year is that there's really not a lot to discuss, because everything is basically going to be baked in via contractual obligations. All the contracts are settled, there's not going to be a lot of what ifs, so we're really just going to have to, so, she thinks that, you know, two workshops should be sufficient, I don't know that we're going to need to have six meetings, but I'm just highlighting when, you know, the dates here and, and the deadlines. So, what I would say is that, we start off with doing the Wednesday, October first. We then come back on the week of, the, the week of Columbus Day, we have, you know, a meeting or two on the week of Columbus Day. And then, but because of the deadlines here, I just want to be clear on this, because of the publication deadlines, in order to meet the, the minimum number of days of working with the local publication deadline, they need their stuff the Friday before. So, that's, so, in order for me to get in the paper and provide the, you know, at least five days' notice, I need to, to have, we need to have an accepted tentative, you know, basically a, you know, tentative budget that's become a, you know, preliminary budget to the paper by the twenty-fourth. So, it can be in the following week's local to meet the deadline, because we have to have it in there by, if we, we really can't go past that, because you have to be at least five days before the public hearing that you're going to have on the preliminary budget. So, and we have to have the preliminary budget hearing, it can be no later than, just to close up here, it can be no later than Thursday, November sixth. So, you know, what we're shooting for is to basically have the budget, you know, in preliminary budget form by Friday, October twenty-fourth. So, we're going to have, let's just say, like two or three weeks, hopefully just two weeks of getting this done, but then we're going, this is going to be out of our, we're not going to then pick it up and touch it again until November sixth, you know, which is going to be the public hearing. So, I guess what I would say is that, you know, take a look at this, but I think we're going to need to have probably three meetings or so. One on the first, and then we'll have, you know, we can have one, you know, one on the first, one the week of the, one the week of the twelfth, and then maybe, you know, one that last week, but we're going to have to have this wrapped up by the twenty-fourth.
When is it going to get?
Well, yeah, yes, I did, yes, I, that's right.
So... Josh?
What?
Do you know when, it says tentative, do you know when this is going to get kind of like solid updates that it's...
Depends on you. I mean, we're, we're, we're going, yes.
So, the, so the clerk is going to publish or release to the public on September thirtieth, and then we're going to meet the next day.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, look, so...
That's the tentative budget.
That's the tentative.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, we get it...
The public doesn't get a comment on it until the November sixth.
So, we'll also get it on the thirtieth as a tentative.
Yeah.
Got it.
But we have, yes, it's got, it's got to be to you, and then, and then by, by, I want to say it's by, there's an October, it's like the first week of October.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'm supposed to present the budget to you.
Yes.
This says in town law, I'm supposed to present the budget, you have a special meeting, by a certain October date, and so, there's a, I'm saying, it's a very tight window. So, we need to, we need to do it that way. And then, I would call the October first really a budget presentation initial, we're going through it, and if...
Your workshop will be the fourteenth.
Yeah, yeah. So, really, this is your chance to kind of like, you know, we're going to go through it line by line by line with Pam on the first. You know, the public will be able to be there, be able to see it, and then they will then have, after that, our next, our actual workshop, where we're going through and making cuts and adjustments, you and the public will have had almost two weeks before we do that. So, I think that is, you know, I would think two weeks is adequate, you know, adequate time to do that. But, look, I'm going by the state's calendar here, so, that, that, that's...
And you've baked in four workshops through the end of October.
I have baked in four workshops.
Correct.
And if we don't meet them, we don't meet them. And these are all up to the public, obviously.
So, I was, I was hoping that maybe October first would be better, I don't know, maybe not the year, but I'll watch it.
Okay.
And then obviously, just, I mean, the rest of this here is the preliminary budget of hearing, what I, I would suggest we do with like either, you know, Wednesday, well, I don't know, you know, I would say Thursday, November sixth is kind of better than the Wednesday, November fifth. You can adjourn it past November fifteenth, and you got to have a final budget by November twentieth. So, as you know, this is all very sort of quick, like month of stuff. I don't plan it out this way, but that's the, that's the state's, um, all right. This, this next thing is the Association of Towns Tell Your Towns History, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of our nation. I thought this would be something to, you know, see if we could work out with the town historian. And basically, you, you've got this submission, you got to write an essay talking about your town's role in the founding, you know, of a, of a republic. And if you get chosen, then they come, they do a film, and they, they make a video, et cetera, and they'll show it off at their, you know, their annual meeting. I'm sure it'll get distributed elsewhere, but, I mean, we have, like, we did play a role, so, it would, it would be interesting to, to see what, what we can come up with. And you know, next year's the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of our nation. Now, we have a special events permit, back to school ice cream social, so this is, um, this is the Cornwall Special Education Parent Teacher Association. They're looking to have a ice cream social in Riverlight Park. So, this is, have they provided...
I was going to say, I do have insurance, I didn't print it out, but I do have insurance, and, okay, it's over.
Okay, um, and I, I meant to, I do have either four or five applications for planning board replacements. I just didn't, I didn't want to start interviews this month, because we have the, and, you know, quite a few people weren't around and available to, to interview, so I thought we would pick that up in September. But I do, I do have, I'll, I will, and I can share those with everybody. We also have, you may have heard that, that Terry Hildebrand has resigned from the Cop Plan, you know, committee. You know, definitely a, a loss to the committee. And, at this point, and it wasn't anything to do with us, it was just for personal reasons, I'm sure you read the, the letter, et cetera. But, we're talking to the, you know, the committee members, and we're kind of like halfway through the process here, so, you know, open question as to whether or not it makes sense to bring someone new into the middle of this, when, you know, we had already, you know, we had had the, you know, additional two members of the public at this point, and so now, instead of having three members of the public, we'll have, you know, two members of the public, so that, that's an open, you know, I don't know that we need to fill it, but, I mean, by the time we get through the process of selecting, you know, unless you go with someone that was early on the list, I don't know. I think, I think that's a, but I just got this yet, you know, I'm on it, so...
And I think if it came to us and subject, we'd be a different person, but otherwise, it's, it's very far along with this.
Yeah, that's, that's my, uh, and then, last thing, items received after the final agenda, so I do have some good news. Tim, you might know about this, this, this literally just, I mean, even though this is dated August first, I didn't get this until like, like, you know, late last week. You remember that we applied for the Critical Infrastructure Grant Program? The, for those, feels like, those, uh, road barrier systems that you use to block off traffic for, for special events? Yeah, so we were awarded, um, yeah, we got just about fifty thousand dollars, which passes down to...
It's a good chunk of money.
Yeah, I mean, how many do you think that's going to buy?
I looked it up, eight.
Oh, wow, eight.
We looked it up.
All right.
Wow, that's great. So, we're going to have eight of them. Yeah, that's great.
Is it the same ones that the county loaned us?
Yes.
They look medieval.
It's supposed to look medieval.
I know. They are quite an apparatus.
Of course it looks like it, I'm not sure they'll get through that.
Oh, yeah, and then when someone described to me what it actually does to a vehicle, and I tried to see, it's like it eats the car.
It's a cool, yes, good thing, I think it was poor, that, one time.
The engineering of it is very, uh, very interesting.
Yeah, they're one of the few, I think they may be the only manufacturer that's rated to stop like a tractor trailer.
Yeah.
That's the one that has...
Millennial has this.
Yeah, it's a good one, I mean, yeah.
Millennial, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
It's good news, that's great.
It is, it is good news.
Where are we going to put them, Tommy?
I'm thinking, I, we think we should have room in the police shed barn area.
You mean, what?
Are they stachy?
No. But, yeah, we can tell them with our U T V though, so...
Ah, okay.
That means that we're going, that's, we use them for the cam barriers, and we're... Not a hitch.
Okay.
I was going to say, that would be a hitch.
Okay, uh, public comments. Yes.
Great work, and I'd love to move through code. I've hung up with the I D A and the Amazon warehouse out in Waywarda. I emailed you, Josh, on this one, as well as James. They, they, there's, there's significant miscommunication that's intentional that's going on with that, with the I D A. When the planning board turned down, the zoning board of appeals turned down the five-story, they did not turn down the project, and the planning board approved it the night before. So, we have the public here with the I D A, and the T E P, the planning board approving the thing on the next night, and then the zoning board turned it down, which is appropriate if this thing is going to be actually data centers. There are two buildings on those plans, and data centers are being aligned with natural gas power plants, because this allows for special rating, rates. And so, they're seeking a hundred and two million dollars in tax rebates for something that they absolutely want to be able to do in the first place. So, once you are frustrated in one plan, you're going to go for hardship under, and, and apply for something else. That's part of our law is zoning boards. So, you've got something here that's being strategically laid out, can you prove it? No, but we'll find out about it. So, I'm concerned that you and Mayor are on top of this, because the difference that's going to be given away to the, by the I D A to Amazon has to be made up by local taxpayers across the county. SCUFS has been talking about this, and I don't, it's complicated, and I don't... Skoukis has been talking about this, and I don't... it's complicated, and I don't know if you've got more information than I do, but everything I got from the IDA, they changed the record after the fact, and that just red flags all over the place.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? No? Okay. All right, so next we have the special meeting. Let's just start getting into this.
I have.
We have a resolution, secret for Mungar Cottage Improvement Project. I get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Yes. Now therefore, be resolved as follows, that the town board accepts and approves said EAF Parts 1, 2, and 3, and the supervisor is hereby authorized to sign the same, and two, that after considering all the information presented to it, including the EAF, the town board adopts a negative declaration attached here too, pending a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Next, I have a resolution approving the police chief employment agreement amendments. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Now therefore, be resolved as follows, the town board of the town of Cornwall is hereby approved the said amendment to the employment agreement two, the town board hereby authorizes the town supervisor to execute the amendment to employment agreement, and any documents necessary to carry out the terms and provisions thereof, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Next, I have the submission of local laws in final form, by all means, sounds so serious. I have something for that.
Really, they're just kind of emails.
Yeah. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Now therefore, be resolved that the town board hereby approves delivery of local laws in final form to town board members by any of the methods authorized in municipal home rule law, subsection 20, including the electronic delivery to town board members at their official assigned town email addresses, with the town clerk being authorized to use such authorized method of delivery as shall be appropriate under the circumstances. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
I will be voting no, and I'm voting no, because when I received the email from Mr. Gaba, I do think this is something that a new board should be doing in a new organization we do not need.
Yes, Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Okay, let's see, next we have the resolution MS for Stormwater Management Plan Annual Report, scheduled public hearing, can I get a motion to waive the reading?
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Now therefore, be resolved as follows, that the public hearing on the town's 2025 Stormwater Management Plan and 2025 Annual Report is scheduled for September 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, and two, the notice of said public hearing shall be published and posted as required.
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Okay, can I get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Now therefore, this is the resolution inter municipal agreement for the control of snow and ice on certain county roads. Now therefore, be resolved as follows, that the town board does hereby approve the inter municipal agreement for control of snow and ice on certain county roads, a copy of which is attached here two, two, the town board authorizes the supervisor to execute the same, and three, the town agrees to provide the county with the required certificates of insurance together with the agreement executed by the supervisor. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Let's see, next we have the resolution to the inter county transportation agreement amendment, can I get a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Now therefore, be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby agrees to enter into said amendment number six, a copy of which is attached here two, two, that the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms therein. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Can I get a motion to waive the reading of the release of RFPs for near four projects?
Yes.
Pardon me.
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Now therefore, be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby puts out a request for proposals to retain the project manager administrator for the Riverlight Park Improvement Project and the Cornwall Connector Trail, and a request for proposals for a project administrator for the branding and wave lighting project. Two, that the town attorney is hereby requested indirectly to prepare the two requests for proposals and notices of the same in accordance with the specifications of the grant's provisions. Three, that due dates for submission of an opening of responses of the two requests shall be set for a date and time to be determined by the town supervisor, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Can I get a motion to accept Tectonics' proposal for surveying services for elevable ground?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Next, I have Colliers. Next, can I get a motion to approve the environmental site assessment proposal by Colliers Engineering and Design for elevable ground?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Let me see, next we have the street sweeper inter municipal agreement, can I get a motion to waive the reading?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Now therefore, be resolved as follows, that the town of Cornwall shall transfer its street sweeper as described in the book for the amount of $8,000 to the Village of Florida in as-is condition, with no warranties expressed or implied with the Village of Florida, to be responsible for transporting said sweeper to the Village of Florida. Be it further resolved, that this resolution shall become binding only upon the affirmative vote of the legislative bodies of each municipal authority. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Let's see, next, can I get a motion to approve the Shore Road Water Main Replacement Amendment to the engineering agreement?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Next, can I get a motion to approve the payment application for the Shore Road Phase II project?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Next, can I get a motion to approve the payment application for the Currie Road Retain Wall Project?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Okay, next, can I get a motion to approve the payment application for the Hasbrook Granage Project?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Okay, number 15, okay. Next, I have the Hasbrook Granage Project Change Order Number Five, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Next, I have Hasbrook Granage Project Change Order Number Six, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Number 17, film permit application, fee schedule, can I get a motion to approve, I know I just added there OEM to that part up top, and...
Just whatever language mirrors the policy.
Yeah, we'll check it, we'll...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so it's clear.
Absolutely. If I could get a motion to approve the film permit application fee schedule?
So moved.
Just not that changes.
He said what the gene...
With amended changes.
And then it to...
With the amended changes.
May or the policies that applies to OEM review.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Last, we have the special events permit for the SEPTA back-to-school ice cream social, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. And last, we have War Number Eight, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. How quickly can we get through committee reports?
I don't have...
Okay, yeah, that's quick, okay, Tim.
I'm... I'm... I'm...
I'm...
I'm sorry, yeah.
We can always skip ahead of this.
Yeah, Tim? No, we said you didn't have to...
Is there anything out of the ordinary? Nothing?
Nothing, I don't know, same, same stuff as always wanted. I was just getting to towns, because...
Yeah.
Because, only because time went away quick and what else?
Yes.
It's normal stuff, isn't it?
You can skip it.
Almost, skip all the stuff like that. It's normal, time highways during the...
There we go.
We give you treatment time, but I was trying to make it on this one.
I was wondering about that. I was wondering. You only, you know...
I worked like seven or eight times, but I've had it.
Yeah.
They're good citizens.
Great. The only thing I wanted to update the board with the furniture from Mungar Cottage, that the couches and chairs are there. On Friday, the chairs were actually delivered. The owner actually gave us an additional discount of $1,000 because of the delay in actual delivery. I will tell you on Monday, the seniors, including someone's relative that's in the room, really enjoyed the new chairs, they were... the arms, and it really was very helpful, so I think that, I just want to let, you know, it's a job, you know, well done, like, after we go around things, here's something that actually, you know, gets you permission, and...
That's good news.
Yeah. The other thing is, they just, this is just something, the seniors all started to talk, I know I sent them that to Tom and Josh, Phyllis and Laura regarding maybe painting the place, like, just, like, freshing it up, I think they were excited, they, it was a spark on their face, and they're like, listen, can we do something just very minimal to do it? And, I don't know, there's other things, but enough.
Okay. I, you know, I'm sure I have stuff, but it's, you know, not that...
You have a whole list.
Yeah, and I, you know, I had a whole list, and really, I was going to be, yeah, so, but, because...
You gave us the recreation updates, and all ready.
I did, I did, I mean, I could add stuff to that.
I feel super updated.
I hope, I hope you do.
That's enough updating.
You do. Well, I mean, being that we do have one item we got to talk about in closed session, so I'll skip adding anything further. Is there any public comments before we go into closed session? Yes?
Craig Robine, Mr. Robinson. My letter that I sent out right today directly deals with this advice on council, usually it's advice of council, and also, I don't recall seeing executive session prior to this, but I know that this is the final, and I can't find the final on the website right now. There are five different agendas for this evening. It was just helpful in terms of people understanding things, to have these things numbered, to their change, to highlight, get through the changes, like, I was going to make comments on 19 and 26, so with red written stuff, I have to go on with the user, but going back to this, if this had anything to do with my sexual harassment warning letter that was given me, it has absolutely no standing in law. I object to this being secret. The attorney who did this was not authorized to act as he did, and it has been used to prevent me from having my rights to get information as our code allows, and order of ethics has been passed into this, the chair has said you cannot get something from me, is that correct?
No, I said I got it from you.
Oh, you've got, I thought you said you didn't get anything directed from me. So I am waiting to hear on that, that's been a while, and if you grab this, in the name of what you do, that will also be forwarded to you for that. I told you last month, playing it by ear, I am playing it by ear, I'm learning a lot in the process, I really wish this wasn't the way we're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to go into closed session to seek the advice of council?
Yes, I mean, so moved.
Second. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rosati?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Now, I'm confused.